All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the meeting to order here at 7:01. We have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to potential litigation associated with the cost recovery for the Wildwood School oil tank breach in accordance with Mass. General 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, as an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation or litigating position of the town. All members are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us. I want to thank members of the board, members of our staff, who are wearing pink tonight in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you all. Next on our agenda is the transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have Treasury warrants 2515, 2515W, 2515T, 2515S, 25M8S, 25M9S, 25V12S, 2516, 2516W, 2516T, 2517, 2517W, 2517T, and 2517S. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next up, item number three is the approval of minutes from October 15, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. West. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor? It is also unanimous. Thank you very much. Which leads us into our first and only appointment. I'd like to welcome, and please feel free to come on up, our Director of Planning and Conservation, Valerie Gingrich, is here this evening. Good evening to you.
Good evening.
And thank you for being here. As residents and members of the board will know, we have a special town meeting coming up on Saturday, December 7, 9:00 AM at the high school, to take up five different articles. One of them, and probably the most notable, is the one as it relates to the MBTA community zoning. And so Valerie's here to give us an update. Most of you are aware that there was a joint meeting of the planning board and the finance committee last Tuesday. A number of you were in attendance and gave a very nice presentation the other night, got some feedback from both committees and residents. And tonight, you are here to enlighten us on everything we need to know leading up to the December 7 vote. So with that, I want to wish you good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I forgot to mention that our town manager, you want to add to that big introduction?
If I could, just very briefly. So as the Chair mentioned, this presentation is substantially similar to the one that folks may have seen at the Joint Planning Board FinCom hearing last week. I think the goal of this tonight is twofold. Number one is obviously for the board and for the people at home who didn't have a chance to be at that meeting to get this presentation. The second, and I think just as crucial, goal would be to get some feedback from the select board about the presentation, whether or not you feel like there's information that we could share in a better or a different way, whether there's information you feel like we've missed that should be on there, and just get some constructive feedback about the presentation.
Great.
So, thank you very much.
And thank you for raising that point. I remember, I don't want to pinpoint the timeframe you were here, but last time you were here, I think it was in the lead-up to our Springtown meeting, and we didn't have great feedback for you. Nothing against you, but maybe just the article. So maybe tonight, we'll continue to keep it positive, but try to give you some constructive feedback as well.
Perfect, thank you. Valerie Gingrich, I'm the Director of Planning and Conservation for those at home. And you all are familiar with this, but you know, folks at home might not be.
Sure.
So I'm going to go through the presentation, and you can either, you know, I'll take questions or comments as I go, or we can wait till the end. Either way is fine with me.
Sure. If members want to chime in, please let me know. We're happy to.
Okay. One second. Okay, so this is the MBTA Communities zoning requirement. It's a piece of legislation that was signed by Governor Baker in 2021. And that legislation also requires that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities establish guidelines, which are going to serve as regulations for compliance. So it's the legislation and then the guidelines that go along with it. There are 177 MBTA communities that this requirement applies to. And the requirement is an as-of-right multifamily housing zoning district of reasonable size. And we'll get into what the specifics of that means. And this is a housing, zoning housing requirement. It's for, it's really geared towards market rate housing, but we are, per the guidelines, we are allowed to include an affordable housing component in the zoning. So we'll get into what we're proposing for that. But this effort was an attempt to address housing supply. So first, to talk a little bit about zoning, and I think this, you know, if this is one of the areas where things are still a little fuzzy for, that you hear from folks in the community, I'm happy to go into more detail. But zoning is really your options for development on a parcel. It's a list of uses that you can do. And each zone, each zoning district has its own set of uses of what you can do. And I'm going to give an example of that. The general business zone, which is, you know, largely along Main Street, some of our main corridors, commercial corridors, we have the general business zone. And within that zone, you can do an office, a brew pub, a general service restaurant, retail, under 30,000 square feet, a car wash. So it's really just kind of a menu of options for you, as if your parcel is a blank slate and you're going to develop something. Getting into more detail, you hear this term "as-of-right," and that term has to do with uses that you can do without a special approval. So of this list, you could do an office, brew pub, restaurant, retail. Those are as-of-right uses. So you don't have to go to the ZBA to get a special permit for your use, like you would have to do with a car wash, to see if your use is appropriate for the location. So it's really kind of a green light for the use. You can do it, but there is still process that goes along with it. So with all of the uses, you would still go to the planning board for a site plan review. And in that process, you would talk about stormwater and parking and parking layout. And that process is really kind of honing in on the components of the site, how it's arranged. It's not saying whether you can do the use. So it's a little bit different. It's more detailed, getting into the fine detail of it. So this is, zoning is also a, not only a menu of uses that you can do, but also what you can do as far as dimensional. And height is one of the big ones. Setbacks, you know, how far you need to be from a property line with your building. And then there's the other things I mentioned, parking and open space. So all of those things are included in zoning, and it sort of sets up the rules of what you can do. So the requirement, this requirement is for zoning, the possibility of multifamily units. So multifamily units would be added to that list of things that you could do. Construction is not required. And it's just really an additional option for property owners and on that list. So getting into exactly what's required of Wilmington. We're required to do a zoning district that's at least 50 acres in size. Half of that district has to be within a half mile of the train. And then we need to do a unit capacity of 1248. And just a note on this 1248, there is a spreadsheet that we get that kind of measures the compliance of what we're proposing. And that spreadsheet imagines all blank parcels, right? So, and we plug into that, you know, how high you can do a building and all the setbacks, we plug in all the details, and that spreadsheet has to equal this many units. So it's really kind of a paper exercise. That number is not a number that could actually happen, right? Because, a couple things. Because it looks like a scary number. But when you think about, the spreadsheet's imagining there's nothing there. But for instance, you'll see that Metro Apartments, right by the train station, is part of the district that's being proposed. So Metro already has a three-story multifamily housing development on it today. It's 108 units. But that spreadsheet is really just kind of imagining that there's nothing there, right? So it's counting what you can do there. Is something going to actually be built there in addition to what's there today? No, because you'd have to tear it down and rebuild it, which doesn't make any sense for someone. So the spreadsheet's really kind of an exercise on paper that we need to get to. It's not an actual number of what could happen. There's also some limitations with the spreadsheet and its maps as far as, it doesn't get into detail. Like it doesn't get into soil conditions, or you know, whether you're on septic or sewer, you know, the fine details of wetlands. So it's really a paper exercise, and it's, that number is not an actual number, but we have to get the spreadsheet to equal that number.
Then why is the state making us do this, Valerie? I don't get it. If this is just a paper exercise, why not put Silver Lake on it and make that the full parcel and call it a day?
Well, they didn't make it that easy.
Oh, okay. All right. Just checking.
Yeah.
I'm saying, put, you know...
Yeah. So the spreadsheet comes with mapping that you can't, they actually created maps that show developable area and non-developable. So you can't pick a huge mass of wetlands and zone it for housing. Because, yeah, because, because the spreadsheet won't give you any developable area there. So it's a paper exercise, but it's not an entirely fake exercise. So, you know, I guess the thing is, is that where we're focusing, and I'll go through it, but the proposal kind of tried to focus on some of our existing multifamily areas, right? So you could tear down Metro and build back Metro. The zoning would allow that, and you wouldn't, you know, you could do that, but no one's going to do that, because it just doesn't make sense financially.
If I could just interject real quick, several of the municipalities who have complied with the MBTA zoning have done it with pre-existing development.
Yeah.
So they're not going to see any other new development out of this, because they already had zones that complied with the MBTA zoning requirements. They just said, they put a circle around it and went to the state and said, here, this is the zone that complies with what you want, but it's already fully built out multifamilies like they were expected under the zoning. So this...
I get it. I don't mean to interrupt your presentation.
Sure.
It's nice of me to do that. You could take a small convenience store, I'm not suggesting anybody do this out there. You could take a small convenience store and some developer could come to him with a blank check, and then all of a sudden, we have 700 units on a, you know, footprint of size.
The other thing I would add to that, thank you, is, you know, to your point, Eric, it's a good point, but I would just argue perhaps that those communities are not, don't fit the profile of Wilmington.
No, I'm not suggesting...
We don't have multi-story buildings, and we have a couple, but not a lot, that we could just circle on a map. You know, I'm looking around at the communities that we abut, who are all rejecting this, you know, because I think they fit a particular profile that we also fit. You know, it's difficult to compare us to, you know, something in Metro Boston, right? I don't consider us Metro West or anything like that. So it's a good point. I just wanted to add that, you know.
And if I could, to that point too, I think it's actually a good point to bring up so people understand that the communities that have, a lot of the communities that have accepted this, because it was easy for them. You know, it's not going to make a change or an impact, as opposed to the many that have rejected it, like Mr. Chair just said, closer to where we are, because it would make a significant impact. So it's good to know.
Continue on?
Please continue. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the planning board was tasked with figuring out what the best option for Wilmington would be, to comply, and kind of what would make sense here in town. So again, the focus was on existing multifamily and commercial areas, so we weren't looking at existing single-family residential areas at all. And we had to avoid the groundwater protection district and the floodplain district, which really kind of narrowed down our possible areas with some constraints. The board, we did an online survey last year. This has been going on a while, huh? So last year, we did an online survey where we got input into different areas, you know, Main Street versus North Wilmington, those types of feedback, and used that feedback to develop the proposal. And more recently, this summer, we did an economic feasibility study for the 15% affordable requirement, and it showed that that requirement is, the market here supports that requirement. So you'll see, that's included in the zoning. Okay, so getting into the actual proposal, it's called the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. We call it the MOD for short. And it's an overlay district, which means that we're not taking away the existing zoning. It's something that kind of is just put on top, right? So it's another option put on top of the existing options. You could still do an office, or retail, or a restaurant on Main Street, but now you can also do multifamily. So it's just another option on top, an overlay district. There are three sub-districts within the half-mile. Half of our area is required to be within the half-mile. And then outside the half-mile, we have a sub-district on West Street. And I'll go through each one, but the important part is that this isn't like 40B. So 40B, you could, a developer can come in and kind of pick any parcel, any zone, any area, anywhere in town. This zoning is specifically only for these areas. So it's not town-wide, it's only for the areas that I'm going to go through in the next few slides. So starting with that half, outside the half-mile from the train, with the West Street sub-district, up at the top of the screen is 129 Lowell Street. On the right side of the page is 93. And I'm going to go through, it's just, it's four parcels in this district. I'll go through each one. The allowance is three stories of height, 20-foot setbacks, and two parking spaces. Since we're further from the train, you don't have the benefit of sort of maybe having less cars associated with development. So it's the standard two parking spaces per unit that we already have in town. And to start at the corner, behind Mr. Ticket, there's a vacant parcel there currently at 100 to 104. And that was approved last year as a 40B development through the ZBA. It's approved as actually a four-story building with less than two parking spaces per unit. And it's 132 units there on the corner. So they're getting more height, you know, having to do less parking than this zoning would require. So I think we are pretty confident that the 40B is going to be developed there on the corner. Moving south, before I get to the storage facility, there's a 108 is a single-family home. It's a, less than an acre, and it has quite a bit of wetlands around the back of it. But that is a parcel that could be developed as housing, you know, likely, if those owners choose to do something with their parcel. The spreadsheet gives it 12 units, which I think is very ambitious, because it has a bunch of wetlands, and it doesn't have access to sewer. So that is one spot that could be developed. And then moving south from there, 114 West Street, is the storage facility. And, you know, not super old of a building. This is, I'm told that storage facilities are a great investment, they're very lucrative. So the idea that someone would tear it down to build housing, probably not likely. And then moving across the street to Regency Place, 121 West Street, we have a 40B development. It's three stories, and it has 120 existing units. It has a septic system, a wastewater treatment plant, so it's not on sewer. That's why you see the lower yield numbers. But again, you know, this is a three-story multifamily residential development. Someone would have to tear the whole thing down and then pretty much build the whole thing back, which isn't going to happen. So it's already multifamily. So we tried to capture those places where we already have the multifamily developments, because it's going to stay the same, essentially.
And they're not going to be credited at all to the 1,279 or whatever it is. There's no way we can credit those units to that number that the state has given us, correct?
Well, yeah, so I want to speak to that. I'm glad you brought that up, because what the, the state is not looking for units. The state is looking for acres. So this acreage counts. So because this acreage is already built out, it means, in all likelihood, there's no economic feasibility that any more units are going to be here. But the acres count towards the MBTA zoning. So it's a, for a situation like 100 to 104 and 121, where we already know there's going to be significant single, multifamily already there, it only makes sense to have them as part of this zoning, because they're not going to be able to get any more density, and the acres count towards the 50 that we need.
Okay, well, that's the point I was going to make about the density. I'm glad you said that. You mentioned, Valerie, that no one's going to take it down and rebuild. Why do they have to take it down and rebuild? If there are already units there, can't they just buy it and then add to it or renovate it, keeping the existing units? I mean, why are you saying they have to take it down?
Well, so those parcels are built out, right? So they have, so Regency Place is already three stories high. I don't think it meets the parking of two per unit. You wouldn't be able to fit more units on that site, per the zoning. They don't meet the setbacks. So there's not open space to build more units there. And with West, with 100 West Street, they're actually going higher than this zoning allows. So, and doing less parking than we would require. So they're actually building that parcel out even more than we would allow them under this new zoning. So there's no more to build.
All right. That was going to be my next question, because they seem to be, whether they're doing it purposefully or not, it seems to be waiting and waiting and waiting. I know that there was a financial issue and they had to come before the board to get something special, so they get outside finance. So my concern was, is are they waiting for this to pass in order to get more density, which the town manager mentioned that they couldn't get more density in it, and develop that from 132 units to 175 units? Can they do that?
No, because I was very involved in that permitting, and they have, so they have that parcel built out as much as they can build it out. They squeeze everything on there and they made it work, but they would need to go up in height to get more. They wouldn't be able to kind of expand buildings, because they have, need room for parking, for stormwater, for all of those other things. So they actually probably would get potentially less units with the zoning. So I don't, I don't think that that's their, why the timing's working out for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would there be, would there be a more advantage to file under, since we're under the number 40B? Would they be able to get more units into a specific area? Let's use Nickel Street and how they, by how they put a bunch of stuff in there. Would it be better for them to go 40B? Would they be able to get more units into the property?
100 West Street?
Yeah.
So they...
I mean, they're 40, 100 West is already 40B.
Yeah, yeah.
But is it an advantage to them to stay 40B, or would it be an advantage to get involved with this project?
So they get more height with their 40B approval. So which, knowing that site and how it's kind of maxed out with the layout, taking, they'd have to do less height, so they wouldn't get more, they get more units with the 40B approval.
Mr. West?
One question that I have on that, Valerie, is I get it that you'd get less units, but if you're not under 40B, now they're 100%, hear me out for a second, now instead of being 25% affordable, they're really now 100% marketable units, minus the 10% that we're, that we could potentially hold back for affordable, and maybe an additional 5%. So the bottom line is, is that they could conceivably be, get less units and make more money.
Yeah, I will tell you, I did have a conversation about, there was a point, probably a year more ago, where the developer, the owner of the site was trying to see what the zoning was going to turn into, this zoning. And once we had a good idea of that, he and I discussed what we were looking at, or I think it was his representative. And the feedback that I got back was that that's not helpful, what we were going to be proposing for this, because, because of the height, because it was still going to be, you know, 15% affordable ideally, that the zoning that we came up here was not something that was going to be helpful for them. So that leads me to, and the fact that it is proceeding as the 40B, I do think that it made more sense for them to do the 40B route. Keep going? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then, back to the three sub-districts that are within a half-mile of the train. You see the commuter rail station on Main Street, they're kind of in the center. Three sub-districts, there's a Main Street, mixed-use sub-district, Burlington Ave sub-district, and Deming Way sub-district. And I'll go through each one, starting out with the Burlington Ave sub-district, which is really just the metro parcel. So on this, in this sub-district, it's again a three-story height, 20-foot setbacks, one and a half parking spaces per unit. And picture of Metro, the apartment buildings. This is already a three-story multifamily development, and I believe it's 108 units there. I do want to point out that it looks like there's vacant, part of that parcel is vacant with the woods there. And that piece of it is under a conservation restriction, so you cannot develop that portion of it. So it's not like they have more room to kind of expand that development and do more units. So again, they're maxed out at the three stories, and currently built as a multifamily development, and wouldn't, again, wouldn't make sense to kind of tear that down and rebuild really something that's very similar. Moving down Burlington Ave, we get to the Deming Way sub-district. And this is the Wilmington Housing Authority parcel. It has 69 units on it. They are largely senior affordable. And in this district, we would allow three-story height, 20-foot setbacks, and a lower parking ratio at 1.25 parking spaces per unit. It's actually higher than what they have on site. They don't have a lot of folks driving in that development, so... So, um, the thought was that it's, it's a place where we don't need as, as high of a ratio for parking. Um, and so, you know, that parcel in theory could be redeveloped as more senior affordable housing, which we thought was not necessarily a bad thing. Um, and, um, this zoning sets up the, the height and the setbacks and, and the parking for that.
So I could just interject one more time, um, one of the, I think the, the critical pieces about this particular parcel is, if that were to be redeveloped, there would be an entirely other public process at the Housing Authority they would have to go through to do that. So even though the zoning might allow them to do that as of right, they wouldn't, that development would not happen without the public process. Because the Housing Authority Board would have to be involved, it's obviously a citizen board, it includes some of the residents. There'd have to be conditions made for folks who are already living there and what was gonna happen to them during sort of the construction. So while it is a quote-unquote "as of right" development, that's only for zoning purposes. It would be that the Housing Authority would have to go through a pretty rigid public process.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Just a quick question, what would be allowed today? Like if, if the state came out and said, hey, we wanted to expand on the sixty-nine units or seventy-seven units, whatever it is, what would, you know, what would conceivably we allow today as far as building height and all that with current zoning?
So it, it's currently zoned as a single-family district. Um, so they received, um, if I'm not mistaken about this, I think they went through the Zoning Board of Appeals for an approval to build this. Um, so they got kind of a special exception to build it, it doesn't meet the zoning currently. So we wouldn't allow this, um, with the current zoning, it'd be single-family homes.
Yeah, 'cause they do have the two-story building, probably eight, twelve units or something like that out in the back.
Right, yeah, they have, yeah, and even the single-story ones are, you know, multi-units in those too. So they got a special approval to do that.
'Cause I didn't know if they'd be allowed to potentially knock down the single-family attached units to build something more like what you're looking at in the top picture to cr- create another thirty, forty, whatever units in the, in the existing complex. I didn't know if the existing zoning would allow that.
No, not existing.
Okay, but they could go for a special permit today theoretically, to build something similar to what they have out back. Potentially.
We don't do used special permits, so I don't, I, I'm not sure, um, they'd have to, well, maybe.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, just wondering, you know, 'cause I mean, it just seems like, I would make the argument, you already let me build something and now I just wanna continue helping seniors by building more similar-type units.
Yes.
You might be able to expand a pre-existing non-conformity.
Right, right.
That would be a, a longer process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the Demingway sub-district. And then last, um, we have the Main Street mixed-use sub-district. Um, this is turned a little bit, just so we can fit it on the page. Um, down, bottom left, is the train station, um, and the parking lot there. The, the line, the red line, you know, sort of the upper red line is the, the railroad tracks. And then the lower red line is Main Street. So we're talking about between Main Street and the tracks. And then we, we're going from Burlington Ave, so right the corner where the train station is, um, up to the Hyundai dealership, um, at the other end. So we have, um, a bunch of uses in between there, I just kind of put some graphics on there, just reminding folks what's in that area. Um, EJ's, Dunkin', uh, Mineki, Dollar General, uh, again, all the way up to Hyundai. So it's that stretch of Main Street, not the Bank of America side, only the Dunkin' Donuts side.
Is the Hyundai, um, part of that or it just goes up to the Hyundai?
The Hyundai is, the Hyundai dealership is part of it. Um, but I did wanna note something about that parcel because, um, uh, McGovern was just into, um, the planning board to get permits to redevelop that site as a new car dealership. Um, so they went through a, a multi-month process of, of, um, getting permits to knock down the existing building, put up a new building. And, um, I believe they're in the process of buying that parcel and, um, they're gonna redevelop it as a, a dealership. So unlikely to become multifamily housing. And that's really one of the biggest parcels, um, in that, it is the biggest parcel in that area, um, that we're talking about. And in this sub-district, um, there's a two or three-story height allowance, I'll talk about that variation. Um, twenty-foot setback, one and a half parking spaces per unit. And to kind of explain that, that height allowance, um, this is, it's Main Street, right? We wanna, it's our commercial corridor, wanna keep it commercial, wanna keep it active with businesses. Um, so the idea was to provide an incentive for commercial ground floor uses in this district. So if you're doing residential only, so think of like a town home or something, um, you get to do two stories. Um, you're limited to the two-story height if you're doing residential only. However, if you're doing, you're, or you're allowed to do, um, if you're, if you do a commercial ground floor use, you can do those two stories of residential on top of it. So you basically get sort of a, a free ground floor commercial space, um, f- with this zoning. So the incentive was, we're hoping that, you know, folks will go towards the mixed-use to keep the, the ground floor, sort of a pedestrian, active. Um, and you'll see later on, I'll talk about the streetscape, um, guide, the requirements that we have in the zoning to, to keep it more of a, a Main Street feel, like a New England downtown feel. So the height incentive is one way that we, we did that.
Mr. Palmer?
Question I have right now is, I'm looking here at EJ's all the way up to the Hyundai dealer. Uh, let's rule out the Hyundai dealer where they are planning on building new. Uh, you take all these others, had there ever been any type of, uh, review of how many units you could put in that section there? From EJ's up to Speedway?
So I do have a slide on that, um, it's coming up. So yes, I will get to that. Um, actually, just, I think there's one slide in between. Um, where I just wanted to do a few notes on this, uh, mixed-use district, um, just to give it some context. So today, with its general business zoning, um, you can already do a three-story building. You could build a, you know, you could knock down a, I don't know, one of those, one of those uses and, and put up a three-story office building or a three-story, you don't really do multi-story retail, but you can already do a, a three-story building, um, within that district. So we're, we're really kind of keeping the height the same as already allowed. And then, um, just a note that multifamily residential is already allowed by special permit on the Bank of America side of Main Street. Um, by special permit through the planning board. You don't really see it over there, um, but it is allowed currently, um, through a special permit process. Um, just making the point that just because it might be allowed doesn't mean it makes sense or it will happen, right? So, um, that side, the Bank of America side, hasn't turned into multifamily housing over there. Um, it could, it's an option for people, but it, it hasn't, um, happened. Um, economics, you know, geometry, all those things that play into it. Um, so again, property owners and developers do not have to build residential, um, just because it's an option. Um, but this, you know, Main Street, um, the planning board thought that, our master plan does talk about portions of Main Street here and there where, um, even back when the master plan was done, it was envisioned as a mixed-use type of district. Um, so the thought was, it's not a bad place to add residential use, it's already on one side of the street. Um, and adding it to the other side of the street, um, you know, could be a really, um, beneficial thing for some more activity, some, um, streetscape improvements. Um, and it also, you know, has the potential to provide, um, other housing options. I have a post-it on my computer, um, certain people who wanna be called when condos, um, start leasing up. Because they live in town, they live in a single-family home, um, and they've, they can't manage it anymore. And they wanna, you know, downsize to something that, you know, they only have to take care of their little piece of it and, you know, somebody else takes care of the rest of it. So, um, there are folks who live in town who are looking for condo or apartment options. Um, and this area where it's close to, um, the train, but also on the Lowell Transit line that goes, um, up Main Street and would connect to, you know, Market Basket and the Senior Center and all of those other things. Um, we thought it's not a, not a bad place to be adding some, um, housing options. And so now getting into, um, the question about what, what would we realistically expect, um, for actual, you know, new units through this zoning district? Um, and just to run through sort of some assumptions about things that'll probably stay the same. Um, the Housing Authority, um, not that it'll stay the same forever, but unlikely to change in the very near future. Um, the forty Bs like Metro and Regency and one hundred West Street, I think we can be pretty confident that those are gonna stay in their current form as forty Bs. Uh, the storage facility on West Street, very likely to remain a storage facility for the near future. Um, and then the Hyundai dealership, as I mentioned, um, they have permits now to redevelop as a car dealership. So unlikely to become, um, multifamily housing. So then what are we looking at for possible development? Um, it's, it's really two areas, it's that one parcel on West Street, um, that has a single-family home on it. Again, the spreadsheet gives it twelve units. I think that's very ambitious, I don't know how that might be possible and it definitely wouldn't be possible with a, um, without sewer. So, um, less than twelve there. And then that stretch of Main Street from, um, from the train station up to the Hyundai, but not including it, um, the spreadsheet gives it a hundred and seventy-seven units. Um, but again, that doesn't take into account all of the factors. Like that spreadsheet doesn't take into account areas for stormwater management and, you know, the particulars of what you have to do for site development. So, but we can use that number as a, you know, a, a rough number of, of, of units. So we're looking at, um, you know, less than one hundred and eighty-nine units in that whole fifty acres, fifty-plus acres of, of a district that we're likely to see some change. Now I will say that on the Main Street piece, I've heard from some local developers, um, that have looked at the zoning proposal, um, that do, uh, multifamily development. And they've told me that, um, the numbers, like the market's not there to, to turn House of Pizza into, you know, a, a condo development. Um, so, you know, the market doesn't stay the same, but I, I think, um, I think we're, with this list, we're kind of outlining the, you know, potential places, but wouldn't happen overnight.
Mr. Chip?
Mr. Kyra?
Valerie, the, the Hyundai area, which is just really, it's a shell, right? The building's a shell 'cause it houses cars inside or garage. That's not included on this hundred and seventy-seven?
Correct.
So what would, what would that, uh, Mr. DePalma's question, what would that hold? The housing units if all of a sudden Mr. McGovern decided to say, hey, I, I got twelve other dealerships across the Massachusetts, I don't need this one, I can make a, uh, some, some cash here. What, what do you think would hold in that Hyundai? And then my follow-up would be, and, and looking at this, I, I mean, you guys did an unbelievable job. Yeah, had you thought about putting the, a red circle around Market Basket, Hyundai, that whole area, the new senior center, St. Dorothy's, uh, all which would probably not be developed, maybe St. Dorothy's since they have St. Thomas, but, but that would be a good thing because it would be near the senior center, right? Um, but I'm sure that Market Basket wouldn't move anywhere. So I, I was wondering, did, was that looked at?
We did look at that, yeah. Um, we looked at, so where, where we are with our dis- with the current proposal is we're at the edge of that half-mile. So we can't get any further from the commuter rail station, um, to have it be within the half-mile. Um, and we did look at the other part that really kind of, um, constricted things was the groundwater protection district. Um, we've, luckily, this little stretch of, that we're proposing is largely outside of the groundwater protection district. But then you, you get back into it as you go north. Um, I believe part of the Market Basket Plaza is in the groundwater protection district. And then the other side of Main Street is, is all in the groundwater protection district. So we had to avoid that too, but we did, we did look at the Market Basket Plaza, um, yeah.
Cause I just saw that and I'm like, hmm.
And did you wanna follow up on the Hyundai question?
Yeah, I was just looking for the number, I think it, I think the spreadsheet has it as eighty-six.
Well, that's it.
Yeah. Yep. God, I had that, okay, so, oh, and then just kind of showing some of those, those parcels that are in that Main Street stretch. Um, and then getting into a few other elements of the mixed-use, um, I'm sorry, the multifamily overlay district. Um, you'll see if you look in the zoning, there are, um, design requirements for the streetscape. So it's basically focusing on, uh, the pedestrian experience, um, you know, looking at wider sidewalks, street amenities as far as, you know, um, outdoor dining space and those types of, of connecting sidewalks so that you can walk into a store from the street, you know, it's fronting the street and you have parking around the back. Um, so you'd probably have two entrances, but designing it in a way so that it's, it doesn't have its back turned towards Main Street. It has a really open, active front on Main Street that gives you that more of a downtown feel. And then as I mentioned, um, we worked in their fifteen percent affordable requirement. Um, after we did that economic feasibility analysis, um, that supported the fifteen percent. Um, we're confident that the state will approve that. Um, it's written in a way that if for some reason they don't approve it, which I don't imagine, I can't imagine what that would be, um, but if they, for some reason, don't approve the fifteen percent, um, we would still have the ten percent, um, requirement as the minimum. And then we do also, in the, um, one of the articles, we clarify, make clarification to the Site Plan Review section of the, the zoning bylaw. Okay. All right, so the, uh, the, the timeline, the deadline to adopt zoning to, um, comply with the requirement for us and for actually a lot of communities, I think I counted something like sixty-nine communities have a deadline coming up at the end of the year. Um, so we have to, um, vote on this before the end of the year. Eighty-one communities have adopted zoning for compliance. Um, the state has actually a, a map on their website. The, the blue, um, indications are folks who have been approved or adopted and, um, will submit for approval. And then the, the, kind of the dark gray are folks who have deadlines coming up, which includes us. Some of the ones that have approved, um, Burlington approved zoning, um, Andover did, Woburn did. Um, so those are the ones that have approved, um, right around us. And then, um, so, you know, town meeting's gonna have to sort of weigh whether this proposal, this zoning proposal, um, is something that, you know, works for the town and so that what we currently receive as far as funding um, would be maintained, um, and we would, you know, benefits of, of adopting the zoning, uh, eliminating the risk of a reduction in, in Housing Authority capital funding. And then there's the grant funding impacts that, to the town. Um, we have received millions of dollars in grant funding over the past five years, um, going through some examples of that. Um, we would, if adopted, um, if the zoning would be adopted, we would continue our eligibility for grants like the Mass Works Grant. Uh, we received almost four million dollars for- grants like the Mass Works Grant. Uh, we received almost four million dollars for, um, the sewer extension and, um, Lubbers Brook Culvert, um, at Route sixty-two in North Wilmington, um, replacing a, um, deteriorating culvert, um, that needed to be replaced. And then, um, more current, more, more currently, um, we received a, the town received a, a three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar grant from the MVP program, uh, for a design of a new culvert over Martins Brook, which is on Route sixty-two. Um, as you're heading towards North Reading, if you pass the Health Center, um, and Shea Concrete is coming up on your right, um, you're gonna cross that culvert. You can actually kind of see out over the, the wetlands. Um, that culvert is deteriorating and needs to be replaced, um, in the short term. So we, we were successful, um, in getting a grant to design it and permit it. Um, that program is, often gives construction grants as a, you know, if you apply for, if you receive a design grant and then you apply for a constru- construction grant, you have, uh, you have some good, um, likelihood of getting that grant. Um, so we were planning on doing that for construction and it's up to three million. Um, this program is on the list of grant programs that are impacted by, that are definitely impacted by, um, um, compliance with the MBTA communities. Um, we had our kickoff meeting a few weeks ago and the representative from MVP, um, asked me to stay in touch about, um, the vote that's coming up on, on the zoning. Um, other discretionary funding decisions was also a, a phrase that's in the, the guidelines. Um, it, it doesn't, um, provide what those discretionary funding decisions may be, but we, we did see with Milton, um, um, the town that is not in compliance. They had a, a C-WALL grant taken away from them, um, due to compliance issues. Um, and that C-WALL program wasn't on the list of grants. So we're seeing, you know, grant programs that, that aren't necessarily on the list, um, be impacted by the, by compliance.
All right, if I could just throw in one, the other thing, and I, I, I've shared it with the chair. But, um, we became aware last week, Mary Anglazza from the FinCom was doing some of her own research and I give a lot of credit to her because she did, she did, uh, suss some things out, but it, it, it appears as though, um, there are some grants at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that are also being impacted by this. They're requiring compliance with the VTA communities just to, to proceed with house, those grants as well.
After hearing about the school, uh, grants that are in concern, I was at the meeting the other night with Planning Finance and I threw my support to this project. I'm gonna rescind that now until we find out that the, any school grants will be removed from, uh, the list of, uh, uh, finances that the town, that state is planning to, uh, take from us.
Please continue.
Okay, sure, I'm almost at the end here. So some of the other grants that we received that, you know, um, we're not so sure about, you know, just examples, um, a Mass D E P, PFAS grant, a hundred and eighty thousand. And then we do receive, um, transportation, construction funding, um, from state and federal funding. Um, Lowell, Lowell Woburn Street was a, a town initiative that we took through the tip process through the state. We got it on the tip and, um, got state and federal funding for it through that process. Um, I have been told by the tip manager that, um, for new projects coming in, um, they have, um, a scoring system that will account for, um, MBTA compliance. And they're gonna be having conversations about maybe a stricter policy on, on, um, how projects might be impacted. So for us, um, the next project that would be kind of a town initiative project would be, um, Lowell West Street intersection, um, where we have some, um, cons- uh, design money kind of promised to us through the permitting process. Um, but we, we would be looking for construction funding through the tip process. And then, um, as the town manager stated about the, the schools, um, Governor Haley at one point, I think it was, um, last year, talked about roads and bridges and schools potentially being impacted. So.
Chair, I'm sorry, Valerie.
That's okay.
Yeah, but I, I just wanna make sure that I heard correctly. Are, are you stating that Lowell Woburn Street intersection will be impacted? You know, or the Lowell West Street would be impacted?
So I, so Lowell Woburn Street, um, is, would not be impacted.
Okay, so then to follow on that one, so existing projects, the Butters Road Bridge, the two bridges, uh, over near the Town Park and over at Woburn Street, none, none of the, the existing, um, funding would be affected if this community said no to this MBTA zoning?
Those projects are all MassDOT projects. So, um, and they are already programmed on the tip. Um, so I wouldn't suspect that those would be impacted. I think it's more new projects that we would be, like, Woburn Lowell Street, that wasn't a MassDOT project. That was a town project that we, um, advocated for and got on the tip and did all the work for that. Um, we would anticipate doing something similar with, with Lowell and West Street intersection to try to get construction funding for that. So I think that has the potential for being impacted, um, but, but the, we haven't heard whether, um, MassDOT, how MassDOT might be, you know, choosing projects. We, we haven't heard anything about that, you know, but, but what I've heard is that they don't believe it'll be retroactive.
Right, yeah, because I, I know in the case of the Butters Road Bridge, we've put that too on the, on the tip.
Right.
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 Okay, so that shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be. Right, um, so just to kind of wrap this up, um, we do have a special town meeting scheduled for December seventh for the town to kind of weigh the, the, the proposal, um, whether it's, um, something that is, um, a good idea to comply and continue to get the funding that we get. Um, will have to be kind of weighed by that body. And we are going to do, so that everybody in town knows about it, we're gonna be doing a, um, a mailing to all residents, um, prior to the special town meeting, um, a flyer with the information for town meeting on it and a little bit of, um, information on how, what it's about and how to get more information if they're interested. So, um, so that will go out to folks, um, and they'll hopefully be aware of, of this vote coming up. Thank you.
Valerie, thank you very much for your presentation and for all your hard work. Obviously, this was not an easy exercise that you've had to go through over the last two years now. I mean, it feels like, maybe more than two years, yeah, I guess time flies. Um, and I really appreciate, um, all your efforts and I also wanna recognize, uh, Jane from your office is here as well. Put in a lot of hard work and the Planning Board, really appreciate, um, all their efforts. And for you to, uh, present this again twice in one week. Uh, take next week off. You don't, hopefully you don't have to present this to anyone. Unfortunately, it seems to be changing every time you're here, right? I mean, I can remember back, maybe it was two thousand twenty-three or early two thousand twenty-four, we're leading up to the town meeting. You were before us and we were kind of agreed as a group, we were gonna move this along just to, to get along and make sure we got to a certain point and that we would make a decision. We didn't, um, and I think it was at that time that we were unanimously opposed to this. Um, that may have changed and I wanna be clear that that's okay, right? We're gonna be ultimately voting on this as residents, uh, individuals. And so, uh, you know, but I, I'll just come out right out and say that, you know, I really appreciate all your work, but I, I adamantly oppose this, um, as a resident. Um, this feels a lot like, uh, admittedly, this feels like my parenting style with a five-year-old. Where I tell my five-year-old, if you don't do this, I'm gonna take away your toy. And when she continues to do it, I say, well, if you, you do that, then I'm gonna take away TV. And the punishment continues until hopefully my child complies. Usually that doesn't happen. But, uh, the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, I'm quite frankly insulted about the idea, and this is not directed at you, obviously, you didn't come up with this, the idea that you, you do this or else. And if you don't, then we're gonna take away this, we'll take away that, we're gonna threaten you with this, we're gonna threaten you with that. When the reality is that, uh, that's really not possible. I think in my humble opinion that down the line, there'll be new leadership at the state level and there'll be, you know, there'll be, uh, new laws in place and there'll be amendments made. And quite frankly, I, I don't think that, you know, that this is a good fit for a town like Wilmington. This maybe makes sense in other places. We can draw a circle on a map and check a box. This, I just don't buy it, that this would be just something on a map. Um, and I think this would have real negative implications for our community going forward, far beyond trying to take away some money that I quite frankly think we could make up elsewhere, um, if we were punished by taking away funding. You know, I think we're in a good financial spot, that if we had to come up with some money out of our rainy day fund, we could. Um, now that may not be a popular stance with the management and that's okay. But, uh, I'll leave it at that. I'm, I'm really, um, you know, I'm just one person, but those are my feelings. And, uh, but again, that takes nothing away from all the great work that you've done to try to put us in the best position possible, so I do appreciate it. Ms. Maselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, thank you, you and your, your team, the Planning Board. It's unfortunate that, um, I don't think a lot of people understand that you're just doing your job. You're not the bad guy in this at all. Um, so I just wanna get that out there, that you're simply doing what you were asked to by the state for the town of Wilmington and, and I think I can speak for this group as the chair just did, that we all very much appreciate all the hard work that you have all done. And I think, I think you've come up with the best plan possible. We've seen, seen a million iterations of this and I'm sure there were a million more that we didn't see. So, so for that, I wanna say thank you. Um, I agree with, uh, Mr. Bendel. I, I oppose this. Um, I don't see my mind changing at all. I, I think that your analogy, um, Greg, was spot on. They're strong-arming us. Um, I think when, uh, Governor Haley and her administration, when she's up for renew- for renewal, for reelection, um, the person running against her will have a great platform to run on, being opposed to this. So, um, yeah, I, I, I think, you know, they can only do so much. This doesn't work for our community. Um, we have so many, we have built so mu- so much housing between condos, apartments, townhouses, you know very well. Um, that frankly, we should get credit for that alone because I think Wilmington is doing more than their part to help out with, with lack of housing, because there's a ton of it. We have fifty condos going up, you know, for sale and, and all that. Um, and frankly, shame on, um, the administration for wanting to punish our schools and our teachers and, and all of our residents to continue to drive over, you know, bad bridges and not get the funding they need in schools. I mean, that's, that's horrible. Um, so, but again, thank you, but I, um, I, I oppose this one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. West.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I guess, yeah, I, I'll echo my, uh, my fellow board members in that you've made the best out of a bad situation. You know, I applaud the fact that, you know, the Planning Board, yourself, Valerie, Jane, anybody in, you know, town manager, anybody involved in the process has done their best to minimize the damage, if you will, or minimize the impact. I shouldn't say damage, minimize the impact. Uh, as you know, from the Planning Board Finance Committee, I stand opposed to this as well. Um, a few of the things that I look at is, you know, number one, they're saying that, you know, Demi Way could be affected. In my opinion, and, and we have our state rep in the audience, and please, you know, feel free to chime in in that, I doubt very much that the, the town, we don't pay anything for Demi Way. We don't, I don't think we, aside from maybe some, you know, the, you know, police fire, that type thing. We don't pay for the maintenance of, of Demi Way. That's, that's state-funded. So if, if they're gonna penalize their residents, shame on the state, plain and simple, as far as that goes. Um, as far as, you know, buildings, like we say, you know, hey, we're gonna build up a building and it may, it'll probably never come down. As we know, the Rite Aid Building's coming down soon. Like you said, the McGovern Building's coming down. There's, uh, recently, we had the whole Market Back Basket Plaza come down and it was rebuilt. Uh, we had the Cow Wash come in, you know, and so there's, so there's constantly buildings that are, uh, being retrofitted, built, you know, uh, and all that, you know, and being knocked down. A couple of recent sales right in that strip, you know, you got the Big Joe's on, next to the, uh, train station that was recently sold. You get the Designs by Dawn Building, again, across the street. But I've heard that they, that might be a, a, a rebuilt building at some point in the downstream. You know, the other thing also is that, you know, when you talk about setbacks, what is your setback to the street? Because the thing is, is that if you're building, I'm, I'm assuming that anything that would be built would be close to Main Street and the parking would be out back. And the second we do that, the likelihood of widening Main Street into a fourth lane, you know, now, you know, becomes either incumbent on the other side of the street or nonexistent. So what would be, I, I guess my, my question on that would be, what would be the pocket, the lot restriction from the street, from the sidewalk?
So we have it as a twenty-foot setback on all sides. So it would be a twenty-foot setback and, and within that setback, your, um, the design requirements ask you to do pedestrian scale improvements, like a, a wider sidewalk, um, street, streetscape amenities.
Right, so once we do that, the likelihood of getting any widening of Main Street on that side would probably be nonexistent or very doubtful. I don't know if you have an opinion on that or not. You don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Valerie, I'm sorry. If I'm, if I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize. But I'm just thinking that, you know, I, I mean, I'll say it, I doubt very much that if, if, if a building's built twenty feet from the sidewalk, would be in, that the, uh, person's being mandated to widen the sidewalk, streetscape it, as you say, there's only so close to the street that the state is gonna allow the building to be. Um, the other thing also, like I said, you know, I've heard the whole, I've heard the argument that the more we build, supply and demand will take over. It hasn't yet. I mean, you know, we, you know, think of all the apartments and condos that we've built. I mean, you got Rachel's Way over at Lowell Street. They were in the six hundreds. I think they ended up in the sevens. We got the condos over on, uh, Lowell Street next to, you know, we're, we're at the AFCO property. There, I think, five hundred and something for a one-bedroom, six hundred for a two-bedroom, maybe seven for a three-bedroom. But, you know, again, it's tough for, gee, I'm, you know, I wanna retire, sell my house and move into a condo, but do you move into a six hundred thousand dollar condo and pay a five hundred thousand, excuse me, a five hundred dollar or more HOA fee in the, in the long run? That, you know, that's, to me, that the market rate is not gonna come down anytime soon unless the, unless the, the overall market were to tank like it did in eighty-nine. But again, a lot of those become temporary fixes. I mean, you, you, you know, things come down and then when they come back, they come back at a higher level than they did before. So, but those are, those are a few of my comments and, and again, I, I applaud, I applaud you, I applaud the Planning Board. Um, you know that I'm, you know, that, that I am a fighter for affordable housing and, and trying to get, um, you know, whatever we can out of that. And so I'm glad that you're, that you're, you know, trying your best to try to get that fifteen percent component if, if nothing else. So if it does, you know, if this thing were to pass and we get the fifteen percent, you know, it's somewhat of a win, but I, but I do agree with, you know, with the chair that, again, it's not a, I, I wouldn't wanna take money out of Hyde. But, you know, if we have to take some money out of Hyde, I, you know, I would, but in the same token, I'd reach out to our state legislative delegation and say, excuse me, as residents, we all pay mass sales tax, I may, and mass income tax. So I don't think any of us wanna be punished. You know, if, if you're gonna take away the benefits that we get from paying state income tax, why not reduce what we pay in state income tax by town? Don't think that's possible, but, you know, it, it's just not fair that, that we pay tax and we can't get our equity out of that, the tax we pay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. And I think you raised a couple of good points. I just wanted to add to one. You know, I think we hear from a lot of people often that they'd like to downsize out of their home. People that are maybe, or later on in life would like to downsize from their single-family home. And to your point, you know, I don't know if that beautiful seven hundred thousand dollar condo at Lowell Street is gonna be an option, right? I also think the same for a recent college graduate. I don't remember, you know, I don't know if that's gonna be feasible for someone who just graduated to move out of their parents' home to go right to a seven hundred thousand dollar condo. So when I hear the argument that this is gonna create more housing for Wilmington residents to be able to stay in Wilmington, I'll be curious to see if that actually happens or if it's someone else and, you know, Wilmington is welcome, anyone's welcome to move here in Wilmington. But I'm, you know, if the effort is being made to try to give an option for those who wanna stay here, I don't know if this is a great option.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry, Gary. Um, one thing I wanted to mention too is, I'm also concerned that for the Main Street, if, you know, someone goes in there, and we'll just use the House of Pizza, you know, as an example, to go there, you know, Wilmington House of Pizza's been here forever, right? Someone goes in, whatever, I don't know, buys it, builds it, now that rent for Wilmington House of Pizza is probably gonna be significantly more. So I think we're at risk of losing a lot of small businesses, you know, local, uh, business owners, should that happen. And I also worry that we're gonna have more open, you know, space, given the economy right now, but more so that we would lose the, the, um, small businesses we have in town, because they can't afford to move back into these new, you know, retail-bottom apartment buildings. So, thank you.
And also to that point, you know, it may not make financial sense to buy up House of Pizza someday, which is a great, great spot, but
Yeah.
but maybe it makes sense for them to buy up that one, and, and someone who has the money to buy up the one next to it.
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, you have a little more room.
Yep.
Um, since there are plenty of people out there who have that kinda money, so that's, that's a possibility as well.
Yeah.
Gentlemen?
Thank you. First off, Valerie, I wanna compliment you. Over the, a few years, uh, we've talked about this, I've talked about it with you. Uh, I know your biggest concern was the least impact possible on the community. That feeling I always got with it. When I spoke with you was, you know, you didn't want, want this to be a hot hit for the town. And I commend you, you, you've done it. I mean, you did, your staff, uh, you hold your head high on this one. Uh, what my concerns are is the, uh, funding that they're gonna take away, and how dare they threaten schools? The most vulnerable, vulnerable people are children. And they're threat, she's threatening schools? How dare they? Uh, it's disgusting. And I know, like everyone else here, I was a kid, and when I did wrong, I got punished. And if I kept doing it, I got punished more and more. And it came a point in time where I had nothing, simply because I was being punished for something. But that's when I was a child. If you try to take something away from me now, I'll fight back. I've worked hard all my life, and I've paid my dues to this, this state, and for her to have the audacity, uh, uh, to continue on with taking money away from us? How dare they? How dare they? Get the MBTA to work right. Don't worry about the housing. Get that to work right, maybe more people will be moving out anyways. Taking away from children is the last straw for me, and I am just, I don't care if it's a dollar. This, why are you ta- threatening, threatening parents with taking away money, money from cho- from children's programs? I wanna thank you very much. I know it's been a hard road for you on this, and I am not upset with you. Uh, there's no way, anybody shouldn't be upset with you, because you did what you thought was best for the town.
Absolutely.
And you proved it was, you're right. You are right where you wanna bring it. But for the state to walk up and say, do it, or I'm taking money away from you? Go to hell with them. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kira?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Bendel. Um, Valerie, I, I know you probably don't know the answer to this one, but I like to throw these out at you anyway. Back in, uh, I'm going back a ways, in twenty-eighteen, when I was, uh, sitting where Batman is over there, Mr. Bendel, um, we talked about, and we met at the State House a few times with Representative Robertson and then State Senator Bruce Taugh, uh, about the North Wilmington Platform project. That's an ongoing project. Is that something that would be taken away from this community? Uh, do you know?
I don't suspect so. It's, it's actually, um, very actively under construction right now. So, um, to stop now would be very disruptive and inappropriate.
So that's still ongoing?
It is, yeah, and, and actually, I think, um, last I heard, a few weeks ago, they were at the Conservation Commission meeting, they had to shift something a little bit. Um, they were actually making really good progress on it, so it's looking like it's gonna be wrapping up.
Right.
You know, so I, I, I think, I think that ship has sailed.
I seen, uh, Representative Robertson shaking, and said, no, that's not gonna be taken away, so that's, that's good to know. And then the other thing that Mr. Slagle brought up about, um, you heard about money from Ms. Galezzo or something that could be in jeopardy, what, what was that?
DESI grants, that's what Mr. DePaul was speaking about.
The MSBA?
No, it's Department of, uh, uh, Elementary and Secondary Education discretionary grants.
So what I'm getting at is that the MSBA monies that we're going through now, and we're in the pipeline, none of that is gonna be jeopardized, is that correct?
Well, we don't have any indication that those are gonna be in jeopardy. The, the indication we've had so far is those are not on the table.
Oh, yeah. The same way that the, sorry to interrupt you, same, the same way the Storm Wall was not originally part of the initial threat to the town of Milton, but now it is.
Well, I think, and not to, not to, you know, uh, but I think people have asked about the MSBA, and have been told that those, those grant funds are not on the table. Could that change? Obviously, yes, but, you know, they would, we'd pull no.
I would almost think that the town would have a great opportunity to sue the state for the monies that have been spent, whether it was one-point-three million that
One-point-two million, yeah.
One-point-two million that, that's part of the initial beginning stages, uh, if they took the funding away and stopped us in midstream, I, I would imagine.
Yeah, but
No, no, but thank you for the presentation, it's very enlightening, uh, you really got to the nitty-gritty there. I, uh, I'm a little disappointed, as I said way back when, that a hundred and seventy-seven communities have to absorb all of the housing woes of the state out of three-hundred-and-fifty-one communities. And I get it that they wanna build near commuter reels or close to it or whatever, but they need to, they need a redo, they need a relook, and they need to include all the communities, uh, to address the affordability and the housing issues that, that this Commonwealth has. Uh, and they shouldn't be breaking the backs of a hundred and seventy-seven communities when there is plenty of, uh, other communities that I'm sure, um, can take on some, some affordable housing for, for the residents.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments? Uh, thank you, Valerie. Uh, I do see that our, our state representative, Mr. Robertson's here, I wanna give him the opportunity, if he'd like, if you don't mind, coming up to the microphone, if you're so inclined, and give you the opportunity to speak. I hope if I'm ever down at the State House, you'll give me the same liberty, courtesy. Good evening, Representative.
Because I know when we left town meeting, having the discussion with the public electing to postpone our hearing on this, I told residents I'd keep them up to speed. Uh, unfortunately, most of the amendments, as I told the general public at that, uh, we were outnumbered, and things that were asking for previous accountings and such, and to mitigate that impact was defeated despite our legislative efforts. Uh, as for the efforts for the grants, and provide a little bit, 'cause MVP came up, as well as DESE grants. The DESE thing is, I believe, a departure even more through what the executive agency and the governor's office had, but it's something that I have spoken with a couple of our school committee members back as the last of a few weeks, and I have a meeting with the chair of our, uh, Committee on Primary and Secondary Education, and the commissioner coming up, which I've gotten a few of the allies, who I also mentioned at the town meeting, to agree to sign on to consider, uh, an amendment or in the legislative package to push back against education specifically. Had that been included back in the economic development bill, that would've probably been my personal tipping point on this. But for the MVP, that portion comes under, um, something I got, and I mentioned at the town meeting, and I've been continuously making sure. There are four things which this compliance absolutely impacts, and then the other ten, such as the C-Wall or MVP and the like, are competitive grants, which an additional bonus will be granted to a compliant community, but we won't necessarily be disqualified by. So that goes the same for what I've heard about TIP. As for MSBA and the like, that's funded through a different format, which I think I agree, if they went for MSBA, there would be a bunch of legal outrage over, so I just cannot foresee that happening. So, all in all, the DESE thing, I agree morally, extremely objectionable. I believe the figures that the town gets, though, is about in the upper-five-figure areas, so it's something that we can address, and that, like I said, the group that I've been signing on these amendments with, trying to rescind the portions of the legislation that we've had conversations about, or changing them for the positive and the way that we can live with, has already begun. So, you know, examples, um, my colleague over in Barica, and up in, um, Rep. Gary up in Draggett, for example, we've had conversations about with that aspect of it all. But, um, I just appreciate too, Valerie, for the work and, and really putting it down here. As I said at town meeting, there was no magic fix, the state was going to do something one way or the other here. So this compared to forty-B or some of the other various proposals that were floating around Beacon Hill at the time, such as having a bureaucrat down in the city, you know, redoing some sort of master plan, kind of in the sense what California did, was so much more disastrous in my eyes, that with this, and I brought it before, despite our objections, there are certain principles here, which I believe the municipality can use to mitigate the impact, and I think Valerie demonstrated that. Um, you know, one way or the other, like I said, I sound like a broken record here, the state was gonna do something. I didn't wanna increase the rate of fortyBs, 'cause as was touched upon at the beginning, that carries almost no legal protections and no negotiating from, on behalf of the town. So, again, I just wanted to say kudos for that, and then avail myself to see if there's any specific questions for members on the board about some of the updates to, uh, what the governor and the executive branch is talking about with, uh, compliance or the like.
Thank you, Representative. Anybody have a question, comment for the Representative? Mr. West?
Hi, good eve- good afternoon, Dave, uh, good evening, Dave. Quick question, is that what, if any, infrastructure money would come if we were in compliance? For example, if we wanted to say, hey, we, we wanna widen Main Street to a four-lane road, two lanes on either side, and that's a state highway, so it's really a state road.
Correct.
So if we say, all right, we're gonna, you know, we're planning a hundred and seventy units or whatever, we're gonna knock down some buildings, whatever, what type of infrastructure would the state provide?
So, uh, Miss Grinch touched on it earlier, the best one for us there, and the most useful one to municipalities writ large, is the Mass Works Grant, and that is something that would be impacted on this. Mass Works, uh, takes advantage with private funds and public funds to encourage proper development in the area. We utilize it, for example, going through the Shale Project further up there by the North Wilmington Train Station and that. That's the A number one. But when it comes to a larger project like what we're doing from the Woburn Line down to Burlington Ave currently, in TIPS, that money can be earmarked, and it's something that I've done through budget and bond, um, to try to ship at the twenty-five percent design phase the town has to do, but also whereas well for our regional planning and for some of our engineering and other costs, through non-Mass Works sources.
Okay.
So that money is still available as well. And then for some of the other supports, um, for example, there's, um, I forget the words that make up the acronym, but they call it LANS. It's essentially a grant that would allow the town, for example, to, someone passes away and leaves a property that we wanna buy and, and place into conservation or something like that. Again, that's a style along with, as mentioned, the C-Wall Grant or Brownfield Real Development. We're still eligible, it's just a community that's compliant would get a preference over us if we chose to go that route. But all in all, the grants that we've had for Mass Works, Ms. Grinch pushed back, is a few million dollars every couple of years as the municipality requests, because it requires a, a proper proposal, and the towns in the agreement, and it's a highly competitive grant, where if you and the public, um, for the local level, me and the public on the state level, and the private developer aren't in sync, it doesn't fly. It's not quite, um, didn't happen in Wilmington, but a good example is up the street in Andover, right on the end of Daskin Road, Andover was proposing that. I attended because Tucksbury had concerns about the project. They were looking for a Mass Work grant, but due to changing market conditions, uh, the gentleman who was proposing the project there in the line decided to go a different direction, but that was the end of it in that case for Mass Works.
And a normal, like, chapter ninety road grants and stuff like that would probably not be impacted?
No, not this time, there, there shouldn't, any formulaic things, and that goes as well for education, or for revenue circuit breakers and relief and the things of that. Um, I could read off all fourteen, I would just ask to sit down, of what is competitive, but it's the competitive grants that she is threatening with this. And, um, like I said, Mass Works, the EOHL, EOHLC Housing Choice Development Grant's a brand-new one, so it's not like we're learning, losing access to that in particular. That is just one of what I'm, consider one of the too-few carrots to do so, but
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for the Representative? Dave, thanks for being here.
If you have any others, I'll be in the back.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Valerie, uh, I wanna, uh, I know the night is getting long here. Um, thank you again. Just wanna remind folks, um, that we'll have a special town meeting on December seventh. This presentation will be made available, I would imagine, on our website, for those who wanna see it. They can also see the recording, thanks to our friends at WCTV from last Tuesday and this evening. Uh, there's information on our website, you know, your office has always been very helpful, and, uh, getting back to folks if they have questions, and, uh, and our mailer is now gonna be going out, uh, before special town meeting.
Just to let folks know that it's happening.
Just to let folks know that it's happening. So, uh, hopefully that feedback was constructive, and, uh, and again, none of it, I believe, was aimed at you, because I think we're all in agreement, you've done a wonderful job.
No.
So with that, we'll wish you a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Val.
Thank you, Valerie.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Valerie.
And Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Hope you don't have to present this again till town meeting.
No, we're, we're letting her off the hook.
All right. Okay, so we will move to the next item, which is communications. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first communication is a member in, um, to the board regarding, uh, the ARPA funding update. Uh, as the board is, is, uh, is aware, uh, the town receives, uh, slightly over seven million dollars in ARPA funding, and, um, uh, we have, uh, deadlines that are rapidly approaching, uh, by which tho- those funds need to be obligated, which is December thirty-first of this year, and then, uh, all expenditures have to be done by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. So the good news is, is that we have, uh, obligated almost the entirety of our seven million dollar allocation. Uh, the only unobligated funds are twelve million, or twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, um, those, those in the line for the, uh, for the easements. Um, and so, uh, we anticipate that those, uh, the funds for those easements will be expended before the end of the fiscal year. The engineers' offices, we have the easements, but the, the people are making it difficult to get the checks to them, so, um, working on that. Uh, the only other projects that have, uh, remaining funds left to be expended are the replacement of, uh, Woburn, uh, Street Water Main from Lowell Street to Woburn Street School. Um, the, uh, again, the utility easements that we just discussed, um, there's funds for grant administration that's designed to last to the end of the, of the ARPA, that's just our consultant who's administering the grant. And so, um, if the folks, if the board has any questions, I'd be glad to.
Sure. Anybody questions or comments for the manager on this one?
Yeah.
Mr. Kira?
So, the way you have it set up here, um, is that out of the three million, I'm just rounding figures, for the first one, the replacement of Woburn Street Water Main, there's still two million that needs to be spent?
Correct.
Okay, and that will be, so that will all be?
That will all be spent. Um, the, it's already under, we already have contracts, correct.
And, um, so I get all of the, the listed projects. Uh, the one that we received more detail on is the grant for the facades and the streetscape improvements, a hundred and eighty thousand. Can we get a list of the, um, the businesses that were, uh, granted those fundings and, and those that had applied?
Absolutely. We can provide that to you.
So we can see what they received, that'd be great. Through the generosity of the ARPA fund.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next memo is to the board regarding update on the MSBA process. As the board knows, but for folks at home who may not be aware, earlier this month, the school building committee met on October 8th and took a vote for the preferred option to go forward with the MSBA regarding our elementary schools. The option that was chosen was a new pre-K through 5 option at the site of the North Intermediate School. We have several other deadlines that are coming up. There was a follow-up meeting last week to review and approve the preferred option report that was submitted to MSBA. That submission went to MSBA at the end of last week, it was due by the 24th. We did receive feedback with comments, which happens in every submission to the MSBA of these reports. So our due date to reply to the MSBA with answers to their comments is coming up on the 31st. We have gotten a date earlier today, we got a date to have the virtual meeting with the facilities assessment team at the MSBA, which is going to be myself, the school superintendent, the assistant manager, and our consultants presenting to the, to the facilities assessment team as MSBA in a virtual meeting. And that is a meeting that's required to happen before we go forward in the process, so we'll be doing that on the 13th of November. And we have a meeting scheduled for the school building committee on the 19th, at which time it's anticipated that the committee will be taking a vote on the preferred method of construction, whether that be design, bid, build, or CM at risk. So if folks have any other questions about that, I know that two members of the board are in those meetings, so...
Yeah, thank you for this update. And I know you did a nice job presenting this or discussing this at the October 8th meeting, but maybe for the benefit of the board and for those watching at home, the long-range timeline, like now that we're moving along, we have a preferred option vote, it's been submitted, and we're moving along in the process, what can folks expect in terms of long-term? We know that it's going to go to a town meeting, we know that it's going to eventually go to the ballot box. Do you have any sense of a timeframe that we could let folks know?
Yeah, so I think that's a really excellent question. So we've moved into the next phase at MSBA, which is called schematic design. What that means is between now and April, our design team, Doran Whittier, will be working to, with the building committee to come up with final design of the building that will be submitted to the MSBA at the end of April. That is anticipated to go before a vote at the MSBA at the end of June. In all likelihood, when the MSBA approves that final design, there will need to be a town meeting to approve the funding source, and then a ballot question to approve that funding source. The way it has been presented to the committee in the most likely way that we're going to be funding this is through a debt exclusion, which is a temporary tax increase that goes for the duration of the bond, which we're, we've been presenting as a 30-year bond. The dates for those town meeting and ballot questions have not been set. They will likely happen sometime either early summer or late summer, early fall of 2025.
Thank you. Just so folks can have kind of what expectation of, you know, is it 2025, is it 2026? So that kind of gives them a clearer expectation.
And then construction would be starting. We're probably talking about we're 18 months from construction at this point, probably.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kyra.
To the town manager. Doran Whittier is the designer, and SMMA is acting as the OPM.
That's correct.
I believe that their contract is coming up soon, where we have an OPM now that I think is not competent to take on this project. Couldn't even get out a flyer, and I wouldn't have her do the flyer for the, for the mailer of the, of what Valerie presented today. So we've discussed this about her removal. Is that taking place? Do we know? I mean, I just, let's just get it right on the table. How much did she cost us to put a flyer out because of her incompetence of not being able to do one, other than allowing her child, I think she said, to do it? It was all ripped up and it was, just a mess. I think we got the flies here. So how much more did it cost the town? Do we know that amount?
So I think the flyer was a little over $9,000 to do the flyer.
Where did that money get allocated from?
We did it out of the town manager professional services line.
$9,000 that we probably didn't have to spend if not for this woman's inability to do that. And whether she said she volunteered to do it or not, she volunteered to do it but couldn't, couldn't complete the task. I've been at these meetings, and all I've seen her do is take attendance, and she's the OPM. I've not seen her do anything else. She made a presentation about the difference between design, build, build, design, bid, build, and construction management, manager at risk. And I, she couldn't even read the words on her presentation. I just am wary of putting her, knowing the good work that is being done on the town hall and the senior center by P3, and knowing the OPM there, Dan Pallotta, I, I don't see this woman being able to handle a $240 million project. So I'm, this has been discussed about her removal from this position, and it's up to the town to do that. And I think that she should be removed, not SMMA, but this individual. They can give us another OPM, and if they don't have one, they can go out and subbid one. I just, and if they can't do it, then, then give this responsibility to Doran Whittier. But I'm telling you, she's, she has to go. I mean, you know, I'm just putting it on the line. What's the sense of just, you know, not saying it?
Thank you. Can you confirm a couple of things? Do we know when the contract with SMMA needs to be renewed or reconsidered?
Yeah, so our contract with SMMA extends through schematic design. So we have them through the, so I think technically it ends at the, the MSBA meeting to approve the schematic design, which would be true.
And if a decision was to be made to make a change at this point or at that point in April, that decision lies with the building committee, this board, the town manager, I believe it's the town manager?
Yeah, so the, the town manager is the contracting authority for the town, so Jeff is the one who signed the contract with SMMA, and so in my conversations with town council, that does rely, comply in the town manager's office. If at any time during the process, there was a decision made to go out for a new OPM, that would obviously go through the same process. I think you and Mr. Kyra were both on the, the building committee when you interviewed the OPMs originally. So that, that would be a similar process if there was a different firm that was to be chosen to be the OPM. And in, in full transparency, one of the reasons why the OPM contract runs through the end of schematic design is because oftentimes, occasionally, towns do choose at the end of schematic design that they want to have a different firm be the OPM for construction. That's not uncommon. As Mr. Kyra alluded to, there's in, in our OPM contract, as there is with a lot of our designer contracts, there's a clause that talks about a key person and the ability for the owner, which is the town, to request a change in a member of key personnel. So that's contractual options that we have for our designers.
And I don't think that would be a first in this town. It's, correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't part of the committee at the time, but I believe the Yantow project may have switched OPMs at one point during the project. The folks involved may have been, wanted to change directions, and a change was made. So that, that does happen. And so I appreciate the feedback, Mr. Kyra. I tend to agree with your feedback, and so I would imagine that you've heard that well here this evening, and...
Mr. Chair, what I did hear is something about April. I mean, I can't, if we're waiting to keep her on until April, after the, after the schematic phase, which was said, I mean, I'm not in favor of that. She needs to be removed now, not April.
And just to be clear, the contract we have with SMMA, not with an individual, with SMMA runs through the end of schematic design.
That's fine. I'm not saying that we do away with SMMA. I'm saying that we change the OPM. Now, in April, if you want to go through the process again, you know, the committee went through that process and found that SMMA was, was the best, you know, organization or business or whatever, you know, for, for it, but I don't think the individual was part of it at that point in time. But boy, let me tell you...
Yeah, I think that's, sorry to interrupt you. Just to make, yeah, clear, that's an important point to make. I think when the, when the committee did interview SMMA, there were a number of individuals that we interviewed who are no longer with the firm. They are no longer employed with that firm, is what my understanding is. So I think that's important to note.
Yeah, I just want to know if she's staying on, because I see her costing the town money, not helping the town.
So, oh, no. I was just, so will you make it a point to, to get back to us on that?
Absolutely. And I did have a meeting, in full transparency, with the leadership team today, absent our consultants, to discuss the kind of performance of our consultants, both Doran Whittier and SMMA, today. And so we're certainly aware of the concerns of members of the board, and will absolutely keep the select board in, in the loop with any kind of determinations that we make of those things going forward.
And the building committee.
Oh, absolutely, the building committee.
And I'm just curious, since you had the meeting, at that, at our last meeting, it was mentioned several times by the chairman, Mr. Brand, when it was brought up that we had to make a decision by the 19th as to going with the CMR or the DBB. And he kept saying, well, can we put that off? Can we put that off? Three or four times. Was that discussed at the meeting about putting that vote off? Or is that...
No.
No. Okay. I didn't understand, I didn't understand why his wanting to put that vote off. I probably should have asked him, but...
I mean, I think that's, you bring up a good point. I think he, my impression at the time was that he didn't want to rush the committee into determination, or do we have to make this decision in November? And I think the answer is, we don't, unless we want to take advantage of getting a CM at risk on early to be able to do a kind of side-by-side cost analysis, so that we'd have a third cost analysis along with one from SMMA and from Doran Whittier, and have a cost analysis from the person who's going to be responsible for building the, the structure and living within the costs in that analysis. But we, we could, we could certainly wait to CM at risk or design, bid, build at a later date. We would just run the risk of losing that opportunity to get someone in early.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments? One final, final memo here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this final memorandum is from our highly talented public works director, Jamie McGoldy, regarding the trash and recycling contract for FY '26 through FY '30. It's a very detailed memorandum. I can let you know that Mr. McGoldy and Joe LeBeau, who is the assistant director, approached me shortly after I took the position and let me know that it was their intention to, to go out for an RFP for trash services. We're not required by law to do that. Trash services are exempted from that requirement of public bidding. We could have just continued, just negotiated with our current trash hauler, Casella. But given that, I think, they, and I agreed, anticipated that there was going to be a significant increase in costs, it made sense to see what the market would have and allow for a, an RFP that would be, show us a competitive rates from multiple firms. We did get three responses from our existing hauler, Casella Waste, from Waste Management, and from Boston Carding. As you can see on the second page, we had, you know, there's significant cost differences from our existing hauler and the two new, new respondents. We had, Mr. McGoldy, myself, and Mr. LeBeau had interviews with both Casella Waste and with Waste Management as the two low figures in the RFP process, both to talk to them about the specifics of their bids, and also to try to provide some clarification for any kind of gray areas. The information that you have in this memorandum is a result of those interviews and the clarifications we got from them. So I think there, after those interviews, it wasn't really a contentious conversation about who made the most sense for the town, and so Jamie recommended Casella, but that was a kind of a unanimous determination of all three of us after those interviews.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kyra?
Question? I've been hearing that, I realize the recycling is a bigger barrel than the trash, the blue barrel, but I've been hearing that if someone lost that blue barrel or it got damaged or whatever, they're getting a replacement, that's a smaller-sized barrel. Is that, can you find out if that's true and why they're getting a smaller-sized barrel?
A reci, this is the recycling barrel, you said?
No, this is the trash.
The replacement trash barrel is smaller than the original one?
Yeah. I don't know. Who, who does that come from? Is that...
So my understanding is that when we, when we switched to the automated system, the town bought a bulk supply of barrels that we store, and so when someone has a barrel that's lost or damaged, we replace it from a bulk supply that we bought at the beginning of the contract. So I would understand why it would be a different size, but I can certainly find out.
I don't know. I'm not a person who goes on the social media and the Wilmington, whatever that's called, but there are people that do, and they mentioned to me, there was three or four comments that, oh, I got a replacement barrel, but it was a mini one, smaller than the one that we had. And then someone said, well, maybe it's because we have a new trash company...
No, we've had Casella for five years now, so...
But I know that the residents realize the recycling is bigger than the trash, because you want to recycle more than throw away, but they're saying that there was definitely smaller barrels to replace the originals, but...
I will, I will certainly ask and let you know.
Maybe we can let the public know?
Let the public know.
Okay.
Maybe it's an optical illusion.
Yeah, good deal.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a couple of board to considers. First one, signing an access license in agreement with Olin Corporation. First one, signing an access license in agreement with Olin Corporation. Mr. Manager.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a renewal, effectively, of an access license agreement that we provided to Olin Corporation many, many years ago. So we have the original access agreement. This is an exact replica of it. This allows Olin to do testing on town property that's been impacted by the contamination at Olin. This is absolutely something that we want to continue to allow them to do because they're required, first of all, they're required by, by the state to continue this monitoring. And secondly, you know, it's our property and we want them to be on the hook for maintaining the monitoring on our property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the discussion.
Sure. We have a motion from Mr. DePalma, seconded by Mr. West. Mr. West.
Just a quick question. Did Town Council review this?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, a board to consider is appointing Suzanne Clarkin as a member of the Building Reuse Committee representing the Commission on Disabilities.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. DePalma. Any discussion? Thank you for her volunteerism. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Final board to consider item is a request of Christine Guy on behalf of Where One Wilmington to place promotional signs on the Town Common from November 21st through December 9th, 2024, for the Festival of Trees.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Which brings us to public comments.
Mr. McDonald, good evening.
Good evening. I have a few questions, but before I ask my questions, I wanted to give my perspective and talk about what's been discussed at the meeting in bulk tonight, which is the MBTA zoning. I attended the Finance Committee meeting the other night, and I made a suggestion that probably fell on deaf ears, but I'm going to make the same suggestion tonight. One of the things that I'm disturbed about is that all of you folks at, behind that desk, except for Mr. Slagel, you had opportunities throughout the years to come forth and bring forth some affordable senior housing or do something creative to address the housing crisis. And I can't point out anybody there behind this desk that has done that. The spirit of the MBTA law, the zoning is to address a housing crisis. It happens to be my opinion that they're going about it the wrong way. But one thing that nobody brought up tonight was the fact that the legislature can vote to amend a law. For example, you heard Valerie tonight talk about the limitation on the heights of the buildings. The legislature could actually convene and take a vote to increase that. Mr. West, you did point out something that I appreciated tonight was the fact that Route 38 could be widened. Route 38's a mess. It probably needs a turning lane, which would help alleviate some of the traffic backup. And you heard Valerie Gingrich say, say that that particular proposal that she brought forth is a 20-foot setback from Main Street. If you think about the length of a car, if a driveway was going straight into one of those buildings that got redeveloped, they'd actually have to back out onto Main Street. So I think her proposal, her entire proposal, I'm in disagreement with, and I think it fails us. But I do have a proposal and something that I'd like to point out, that the town has the right to do. First of all, all of you folks pretty much spoke against the governor and shamed her and, and pretty much spoke against this entire MBTA overlay district, but you didn't offer any other solutions. And one of the disappointing things is the fact that you're actually still having a town meeting when it should be canceled. So whether you folks are all against it, it could get voted on, and I think that's a mistake. And I would hope that you'd cancel it, but if you don't cancel it, I would, I would hope that you would come up with a proposal for another additional article at the town meeting. And that article would be a home rule petition, to petition the legislature for special legislation for the town of Wilmington, where the town would be allowed to be exempt from a particular portion of the statute, which forbids the town from rezoning their own property, their own land that they own and control, which I think would be an option that we could partake in. And what my proposal would be, would be to put town-owned land into what's called a community land trust with restrictions and specific direction for, say, senior housing. And what you could do is you could actually craft an article that called for a vote at town meeting for a home rule petition and have that home rule petition seek to accomplish this through the legislature. We would qualify for federal funds from HUD. And as you heard Valerie state tonight, she has a list of seniors who would like to actually move into townhouses and sell their houses, which would free up their houses for other people who need housing. So that's my perspective on that. The, the other question that I have is, with regard to the trash contract, Mr. Slagel, can you tell us what the actual existing contract is and what the tipping fees are? If it's different, if it goes above the contract? And then what the proposed contract would be?
It's not on the agenda, but if you. If you don't have it here this evening, we can.
Certainly.
Follow up at another time.
So the specifics of the contract are not here. You can certainly check with my office, I can provide this to you. The difference in total proposed costs for Casella Waste from last year to this year is $316,564.
And can you share with us how many requests for proposals went out? How many different companies were sent letters to, to bid on this particular contract?
Proactive requests?
You mentioned that Mr. LeBeau and our superintendent got together and they felt as though putting forth a request for proposal would be for the benefit of the town. However, you didn't mention the entire list of companies or trash services that received that request for proposal. You mentioned Waste Management, you mentioned Casella, and I'd like to know how many other trash companies were offered or asked to send in a bid.
So, as I mentioned, we got three bids, the Waste Management, Casella, and Boston Carding.
And Boston what? Carding?
Boston Carding. There were several other companies that requested information.
Is Boston Carding the same owners as North Side Carding?
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot of trash companies, like Wynn, there's JRM, there's a ton of trash companies. And I'm suspecting that you would have a list of a lot of companies, but it sounds like they just sent it out to three companies.
No, I'm not sure you understand how that works. So that when the RFP goes out, we don't send it out, we don't proactively send it to anyone. All of the companies that do trash hauling in Massachusetts are signed up to get their notices from the state when trash hauling contracts come out. And then, I think approximately six companies requested further information on the specs from the town, but they all got notice of it.
Thank you for that. I'm a little disappointed because I think if, if we're exempted from a law that forbids us or allows us to not have to go out for public bid, as you mentioned earlier, being proactive to try to reach out to as many possible companies would be a benefit for the town. It's disturbing to me to hear that the trash is going up when, you know, they, they eliminated labor by coming up with an automated system where people have to, you know, recycle every other week. Before, it used to be every single week. And the trash companies, they just come in with the automated truck and they just flip that barrel up. And it seems like that should be a cost savings rather than an increase. So I'd like to find out if, maybe at another meeting, maybe you don't have this answer now, but the tipping fees at the trash facilities, where it gets disposed of, if you can get that information as to what it's been historically and what it is now, what we're looking at. Because I see, I see a lot of rental trash trucks out there, and I see maybe smaller companies handling the trash. I know Winchester actually has their own program and their own transfer station. And I'd just like the town to take a closer look at some other options that might benefit the town. And the other thing I had to question was about a year, actually, a little over a year ago, it was actually October 23rd of last year, Mr. DePalma. I came before you when you were the Chairman of the Board, and I expressed my concern about Olin and the, the lack of justice for the people of Wilmington, where many kids have gotten cancer and they've died. But the adults that got cancer and died, I asked you to actually have an agenda item where you would actually have a form or something like that. You didn't do that. Your response was, we're going to send it to the department. So my question to you is, since, are you aware that the Olin property got sold?
Of course I am.
Okay. So what's been done for justice for Wilmington? And what department did you send that to?
I told you I sent it to a department, but I didn't.
Oh, you might want to read, you might want to watch the YouTube video with you saying that.
Give me one sec.
Because I watched it twice.
I did advise you, I believe, that all the cancer studies and everything are still under litigation.
The Department of Public Health came back with a report that stated that the childhood cancer is attributed to the Olin site. Okay? So prior to this property being sold, I asked you to convene a form or an agenda item where we can invite the public to come in and express their concerns, but you never did that. And now the property's sold. So what justice did Wilmington get with your leadership? Did it get any justice? Can you tell us what the status of anything like that is? You cannot.
Okay.
That's a no? Would you, would you want to take it under advisement?
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Appreciate your commentary.
How about you, Mr. Bender? I didn't see, I didn't hear you coming up with any agenda items.
Thank you very much for your commentary.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Going to take a look to see if anybody else would like to make a public comment?
Huh? Yeah.
Hearing none, we're going to move.
And what was the total of the warrants for tonight, Mr. Slagel?
Excuse me, sir, we're going to move on to the next agenda item.
For the benefit of the community, what the total warrants were.
Anyone like to make an announcement? Announcements? Mr. DePalma?
I'd like to congratulate law enforcement, fire, EMTs. It's their day today. I want to thank them all. Our fire department's been going through a rough time right now with so many calls, the small brush fire, the accident, and this is first responders' day. I just want to congratulate all of them and wish them nothing but the best.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. West.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Saracota Lecture Fund Committee. They put on a, they sponsored a band, the Working Man's Band, at the middle school last Friday, and it was a great take. A lot of residents enjoyed for, you know, for free, the benefit of having a couple of hours of entertainment. And I'd like to thank the members of that committee that's, over the course of history, they've been doing this since 1910. So obviously, various committee members over many years, but once again, they put on a good show. So I'd like to just shout out to them.
Thank you very much. I want to wish everybody here a happy Halloween. Coming up this week, it looks like we're going to have beautiful weather. So I just want to encourage everybody to have fun and be safe. As you know, the town does not dictate when you can go around and visit your neighbors. So please be responsible, have a lot of fun, whether you're dressing up or you're not. Mr. Kyra, I know you'll be participating in Halloween and perhaps.
I'll be Batman, you can be Robin.
And I could be Robin.
I'm vice president. I don't know who looks best in the sights.
I'm not going there.
You're superheroes.
They are superheroes, no question. Any other announcements?
No, just everybody be safe, drive slow. Thanks for slowing on.
Yes, shout out for the kids.
Absolutely. And one more thing, we won't meet again until this, but you may have heard there is an election coming up. So please encourage everybody to get out and vote. Get out and vote. We've had quite a few people vote already in town, it's my understanding. Been very, very busy in the Clerk's Office, and I want to compliment them. I know that this, however you feel about this election, I think one thing we can all agree on is that our Clerk's Office is working their tails off to make sure this is a success for all. And so we appreciate all their efforts.
And if I could just say, I want to, a shout out to the voters of Wilmington. It's already 30% turnout.
Yeah.
And we're, we're just started our second week of, of early voting.
Wow.
So I think that's spectacular. I mean, I think that's just amazing.
I know, if I can add, I know I came to vote with one of my sons and my parents on Saturday, and we came here about noon, and they already had 350 people voting.
Wow.
On that day alone. So it's great, great to hear. I hope, I hope the other 70% gets out there and votes.
I'll be there. I think there's something exciting about voting on Election Day, so I look forward to it.
Waiting in line.
Hey.
It's a great privilege to have.
No question about it.
You may be the only one, Greg, if everybody already votes.
I know 30% of folks that won't be there. They already came and went.
Mr. Bender, I don't know that we have another meeting before Veterans Day?
Absolutely.
We want to mention that.
Correct.
Keep that in mind.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kyra. We have a wonderful lineup of ceremonies that will honor our veterans coming up on November 11th, thanks to our Veteran Service Office. And I think that's coming up under important dates, but yes, with, it is worth repeating.
And with that, I will not be around on that day, so I unfortunately will not be able to attend.
Okay.
I'll be there in spirit.
No question.
Blue does a great job.
Okay. Is anybody new business? Hearing none, we'll move to important dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Important dates, we have October 28th through November 1st. We're doing curbside collection of yard waste. Also, as I just mentioned, October 28th through November 1st, we have early voting in the Town Hall Auditorium. Extended hours, so it's from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So get out and vote. Reminder, November 3rd, turn your clops, clock, turn your clocks back and change your detector batteries. November 3rd, that's coming up very quick. Also, as the Chair mentioned, November 5th, we have an election. Polls will be open from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. November 11th, Veterans Day, town offices will be closed. There will be a Veterans Day ceremony on the Town Common at 11 o'clock a.m. November 12th, we have the next Select Board meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock p.m. November 19th, as mentioned earlier, we have a meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee. November 25th, we have another Select Board meeting here at Room 9 at 7 o'clock p.m. We will be having the vote for the classic tax classification at that meeting on November 25th. November 28th was Thanksgiving Day. Town offices will be closed. November 29th, Town Office, the day after Thanksgiving, Town offices will also be closed. As mentioned, December 7th, a special time meeting at Wilmington High School, the auditorium, and there's a misprint on here. The Santa's Workshop is actually December 12th. December 12th for Santa's Workshop here at Town Hall, Room 9, from 6 o'clock p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And also want to give a quick shout out to the Horribles Parade. It was, my understanding, was terrific turnout, great weather. This weather's been awesome, so I know the kids really enjoyed it. So thanks to those who put that on.
Mr.
I just want to let everyone know, Wilmington, we're in a drought area time. Please, if you're going, watch your fires. We don't need any sparks causing us more problems.
And, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add that the Festival of Trees will be on the weekend of December 6th, 7th, 8th. 7th and 8th, I can't remember. Yeah, 7th and 8th.
So a lot of good stuff coming up.
Yeah.
And we'll be hopefully highlighting all of that in the coming weeks as well. And we'll be hopefully highlighting all of that in the coming weeks as well. But yes, thank you for that. And so finally, this evening, we'll conclude with a salute to service to a real, a true gentleman. If anybody knows this gentleman, then they know what I'm talking about. And our salute to service night, tonight goes to Robert Bud Callahan, who served the United States Air Force from July of nineteen fifty-four to April of nineteen fifty-eight, and in the United States Air Force Reserves until nineteen sixty-two. He served, during that time, he received the National Defense Service Medal and the Good Conduct Medal. Bud is a longtime resident. Him and his late wife, Dottie, were heavily involved in our community, including raising two wonderful daughters and a son in Wilmington. And Bud has spent countless hours raising money for local organizations such as the Knights of Columbus, and he's still very active in, in the church here in town. And so tonight, we thank him for his service to our country and to our community, and a real gentleman. And I've been very lucky to have, to have known Bud. And so tonight, we thank him for us, for his service, and we salute him.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.